Next, from Chicago. We attend a panel discussion at the annual conference of the Illinois Association of School Boards titled Legislative Issues Impacting Schools. Speakers include Republican State Representatives Bob Pritchard and Thomas Bennett, Democrat State Senator Scott Bennett, and Tony Smith, the State Superintendent of Education. This runs about one hour.
We have a great panel today, and it's been a very, very eventful year, obviously. Lots of things that have happened over the last year or so, and lots of anticipation on what might happen in the next session as we come back into play in January. And of course, the big picture of things that took place this last year in regard to budget and regard to school funding are kind of at the top of the list. And so our legislators will talk a little bit about, and we'll give each of them an opportunity to have a little bit of a retrospective on what the year was for them, then a little bit of what the future might be. And then we have Superintendent, State Superintendent Tony Smith with us also, who will talk a little bit about what now is on his plate based upon what has happened in the legislative session, some of the other kinds of things that the State Board of Education is working on to move things forward, both federal as well as state-related legislative and legal issues. So our panel today, Representative Tom Bennett is on my right over here. Tom is from the Gibson City area, 106th District. Tom is a Republican in the House. Bob Pritchard to my right also, another Republican House member, and Bob represents the DeKalb-Sycamore area, the 70th District. On my left, we have Scott Bennett, and Scott is in the Champaign area, 52nd District. And just by the way, Scott is Tom's nephew, so we got a little bit of Republican-Democrat going on in this family, House and Senate, so...
Wait for Thanksgiving.
That's right.
You think they're suffering.
And then, of course, Tony Smith with us from the State Board of Education. So I'm gonna start with Bob Pritchard, just a little bit of background on that. You know, Bob co-sponsored the evidence-based funding model and was a very, very ardent leader through that over the last several years, very committed to that process, worked through many of the issues related to caucus and everything else, remained the sponsor all the way through. And the sad part is that Bob has already declared that he's retiring and won't run again for his next seat, so we're gonna really miss him. He's been a real stalwart for education issues within the House and on a statewide basis. So I'm gonna let Bob take the first stab there, talking a little bit about what happened this year and things he's looking forward to in the spring.
Let me begin by thanking all of you for being a part of the educational system in the state of Illinois. You all have different roles, but they're all important roles. And my philosophy, long before I became a legislator, was that education is one of the most important services that the state can provide its residents, because it's through the training, through the skill development, that people are able to change their lives, able to achieve their dreams. So you really are at the starting game for our young people as they look to gain those skills and build visions for their future and then work towards achieving those futures. Actually, I have been in the legislature for 15 years, but my involvement and interest in education funding far precedes that. Going back into the 1970s, before some of you were born, I was involved with the Farm Bureau in trying to change how education is funded. Fast forward, what, 40 years or better? We finally have done that. This is something that has been talked about for decades and generations. In fact, you probably can even go back to the early years of our statehood, and we always had questions about how we were going to fund education fairly and equally, dealing with the great diversity that we have in our state, and how we can give every kid the kind of wraparound services that will help them achieve what they want to achieve. And as I looked at this last legislative session, of course, that is my number-one feeling of success, is that we were able to work through and develop through a lot of people's involvement, and the School Management Alliance and Mike Jacoby in particular were very instrumental in helping bring all of that together. But it was a coalition of education groups that really helped bring this bill to fruition. And we have to go back to probably 2013, when the Senate had some study commissions and started to look at an evidence-based model. And then a lot of the support groups started lobbying legislators. And it was a multi-year process to really get people to understand, to fine-tune, the evidence-based model. But I think we have resulted or concluded with a very good model. The question and the challenge for all of us is, will we continue to fund it? Will we add the millions, hundreds of millions of dollars every year that's going to be necessary to get to that adequacy level that all of you are trying to strive for? So the evidence-based model was one of the biggest pieces of legislation that I think we passed out of the 584-some bills that we did pass this year. But getting a budget was also a significant issue. And after going two years without a budget, after building billions of dollars of unpaid bills and the impact that has on your districts as well as all suppliers for the state services, it was something that couldn't continue. And then we looked at rolling back income taxes, now increasing income taxes, and all the discussions and arguments that we've had over that. And then finally, adopting an ESAA plan, and Every Student Succeeds Plan, and I'm assuming Tony's going to go into a little bit more about that, because that is one of the big impacts that the legislation we've done this year has upon you and your districts. But going back a little bit to the evidence-based model, there are a lot of benefits in that for school districts, but there's also a lot of responsibilities. And I hope you, as school leaders, as school board members, realize the opportunities that you have before you. As a legislator for only 15 years, every year we talked about school unfunded mandates and how the legislature kept adding unfunded mandates. Well, for the first time, we've given you a wider window of trying to get around some of those mandates and apply what applies to your district but not apply what doesn't apply to your district. And we have a streamlined waiver process that you can now go through. We've had a reduction in the requirements for physical education every day that gives you some options if it fits your district. And we've allowed you to outsource driver's ed without the red tape that we've acquired before. We tried to get a few other mandates relieved, and we're unsuccessful, but there's always next year. And that's a good slogan for this city. So as you look at the opportunities you have, we are now looking at not only the school funding reform recommendation of some $9,000 for every student around the state, to looking at the needs of your students and looking at a formula for funding the services that would meet those needs and helping you achieve an adequate level of funding for your district. That's huge, but it's a huge responsibility, because we've identified 27 elements based on research that improve students' outcomes. But we give you the freedom of whether you're going to implement those 27 elements with the funding that we do provide, albeit a decade or 15 years before we provide all of it, Tony. But at least we're on a track to providing more money every year, this year $350 million, and hopefully successive years, so that you can get the funding necessary to provide the services that are necessary for the students that you have. And when we do that, we can start addressing the issues that you heard about in the earlier presentation this morning, about the poverty that we have in our districts and the growing needs of those students, but also the growing needs of English-language learners and minority students. They all have different needs, and they need different wraparound services that we've not been able to provide in most cases. Now we're gonna try to get the funding, and we have the best practices identified. So it's up to your boards and your leadership to decide which ones apply to your district and how you can wrap them around the students that you have. It's a huge responsibility. And before, we've always said, "Well, we don't have the funding to do this or that the student needs." But hopefully, over the next few years, we'll give you that funding, and you'll be able to provide those services, which then comes into the issue of accountability or accomplishment or student growth. That's where the new federal law, the Every Student Succeeds Act, comes into play, and the wonderful plan that our State Board of Education, through a lot of collaboration with maybe many of you, has put together on how we want to accomplish that and how we're going to amaze your student growth and how we're going to put some pressure behind using the funding for those best practices that will help the student. And of course, you can't do any of this without revenue. And that was one of the big debates that we had in the legislature this year, was we rolled back the income tax from 5 to 3.75, and now we've raised it back to 4.95 for the average citizens. And people are declaring that that's going to force more citizens out of our state and force us to really miss the mark of providing the services that the state needs. And I contend it all depends upon the mindset and how we sell the issue. Because when you have services that citizens want and elect legislators to provide, you have to fund it. That's one of my fundamental principles, I'm sure it's one of yours. It's the responsibility that we're supposed to have balanced budgets, and when we don't have the revenue for the expenses that we want to incur, there's only one other alternative, and that's you look for the revenue. And a lot of people say, "Well, cut revenue more." Well, look at the revenue bill that we passed. There were $3 billion of cuts in that revenue bill. And if you look at pension reform that everyone is concerned about, 140 billion dollars of unpaid revenue or unpaid pension obligation, we had some reforms in creating the opportunity for a Tier III and looking at a high hybrid system of defined benefit and defined contribution. That's going to move us a little bit. And then when you look at the other issues that we've tried to provide in here of looking at tax relief, that's part of the evidence-based model, that if you're in a high-tax, low-wealth district, you have the opportunity for a tax swap. And there are 40 districts, I believe, that qualify for that this next year. And if you're a high-wealth district, your citizens have the opportunity for a referendum. Now, I know many of you probably won't have to face that issue, but if you do, simply sell what you're doing for the kinds of students you have, because citizens generally want the best for their kids and their grandkids and the future people that provide services in your community. And that allows for a 110% of adequacy, which doesn't affect many of you, but if it does, your citizens can go through a referendum process to try to lower taxes by that 10% level. So there's something in there for a lot of people, and that's really how we were able to get some of this legislated through, was to have compromise, where people did what legislators have always done, and that's to look at their core values and then try to compromise around the edges of those core values. That's something that we seem to lack in Washington right now, and in often cases, we lack it here in Springfield. But that was something that came together in this piece of legislation, and I think that gives us hope for the future, that if we can look at that accomplishment, if people are visiting with their legislators and letting them know what they think and what the impacts of some of these requirements are, I think it's going to get us to a better point. And then finally, as we look at the responsibilities going forward, there are responsibilities dealing with looking at your students and how you provide services for your students, but also looking at the tax relief issue and looking at other options that we've given you in this bill. I think it gives you some flexibility, and with that comes responsibility to try to move forward with a better education model than what the state has structured for you this year. I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Representative Pritchard. I'm gonna go next to Representative Tom Bennett. Tom is a former high school science teacher, so he's been in education, can understand some of the issues from a teacher's side. Tom also served on the House Appropriations Committee, took a lot of look at what Senate Bill I wanted, the evidence-based model initially, and then, of course, 1947. I remember, I'll never forget, on May 30th, when we were trying to get that through the House, caucuses met, and the first person I saw coming out of caucus was Tom, and he came up to me, and I could see it on his face, that there was gonna be some difficulty here getting the Republican caucus to support that in the House. The good news is, we did get him to support us in 1947 at the end, and that's really what we needed to get the evidence-based model in place. Let's welcome Representative Tom Bennett.
Thank you. Very glad to be with you. Bob, I gotta tell you, he's a wealth of information, just listening to him talk about all these things and all the issues that have been going on, and what he captured them and put them together. I wish I had a tape recorder.
We did, we love you.
Tremendous. And Michael, I want to thank you for all your efforts too with the efforts on the evidence base, and you and Ralph, just worked a lot of time to try and make that happen. Glad to be with you. Yes, my name is Tom Bennett. That's Tom. There's another Bennett here, and we'll get to him in just a little bit here. I've been your state representative in 106 for three years, in the second term of our General Assembly as your state representative. Before I go very far, I need to do something, I need to recognize, if I may, announce standing educator in my district. Her name is Lindsey Jensen. Dwight, where are you guys at? Oh, okay, there you go.
Yeah, there should have been a woo-hoo right there.
Yeah, there you go. We need to do this. We need to recognize a wonderful teacher. Her name is Lindsey Johnson of Dwight Township High School, an excellent English teacher, and she was recently recognized as the 2018 Illinois Teacher of the Year by the Illinois State Board of Education. So congratulations. Superintendent Dr. Richard Jansik, Brian Kirschnik is our board president, and Brian's here in the second row with the whole group here all together. So it's just tremendous, and congratulations to the entire school district. I met her the other day, and she is just so full of energy, and you can just see, actually, she just captures the kids. I keep thinking, "This is English."
Amazing.
You know? No, English is great, I just wasn't very good at that, I went to high school. And so for someone to capture that and capture it at the high school level, I mean, that is tremendous, and that's why we need that. So fantastic, so congratulations to her and the entire school district. As Michael said, my background basically, I was a high school science teacher in Melvin Sibley. Anybody ever heard of Melvin Sibley?
Yeah.
Seventy-five kids in high school and 77 kids in junior high, a long time ago. My wife is a retired school teacher. She taught business for almost 33 years at the same place. My mom taught in a one-room country schoolhouse, a long time ago. She went to Illinois State when I was a two-year college, that kind of gives you an idea. But things have changed, of course, and in a lot of ways, a whole lot better for where we are today in the future. And just like many of you, I have served on a school board, both Gibson City and the GCS school boards. And at one point, I was vice chair of the Corn Belt Division. So I want to thank you for your service. I understand we talk about phone calls late at night. I understand we talk about issues on the school board that may involve coaches, curriculum, colors, uniforms. Okay, I understand those things, some of the challenges that you go through. So thank you for being there. Thank you for stepping up to helping your communities. That is so critical to do. Today is not an easy time for school boards or school administrators. You've had the deal with Springfield, and the public got a number of issues around getting payments from Springfield for transportation special aid, evidence-based school funding that Bob talked about a little bit, transgender issues, Every Student Success Act, the ESS, heart testing, I've heard from a number of you in a period of time over that, Common Core, and then also, how do we find new teachers? How do we bring new teachers onboard to get them with us in Illinois? Reports of high salaries and pensions and other topics as well. At times, I think, of course, Springfield added to our unfunded mandates. I think at one time, there was a list of about 200? Okay, still in this. Unfunded mandates and, I'm sorry. Okay, that's not the plan, but that's what happens sometimes. When it gets chance for microphones, I do have a question for the audience. One of those unfunded mandates that we just had this time is Cursive writing that was passed through our T7 heads, and I'd like to know what your thoughts are on that as well. I've been asked, Tom, since you've been there in Springfield for three years, what have you learned? So let me share a short story. Story begins like this. It was a dark and stormy night. A crew member says, "Captain, Captain, wake up." Captain says, "Well?" Crew member says, "Sorry to awake you, sir, but we have a serious problem." Captain says, "Well, what is it?" The crew member says, "There's a ship in our sea lane about 20 miles away, and they refused to move." Captain says, "Well, what do you mean, 'they refused to move'? Just tell them to move." Crew member says, "Sir, we've told them, and they just will not." Captain says, "I'll tell them." Signal goes out, "Move starboard 20 degrees." Signal returns, "Move starboard yourself 20 degrees." Captain says, "I can't believe this. I mean, I'm a captain. Let them know who I am, I'm important." Signal goes out, "This is Captain Horatio Hornblower, the fifth, commanding you to move starboard 20 degrees at once." Signal returns, "This is Seaman Carl Jones, the second, commanding you to move starboard 20 degrees at once." Captain says, "What arrogance. I mean, what presumption. Here's a seaman commanding me a captain. We could just blow them out of the water, let them know who we are." Signal is this, "This is the mighty Missouri, flagship of the 7th Fleet." Signal returns, "This is the Lighthouse." I first heard of the story from a guy named Stephen Covey, who's a tremendous motivational speaker, and he believes this to be true. But there's two things that taken away from that story. The first one is this, the person with the biggest guns does not always win. Second thing, the person with the loudest voice and maybe the longest pedigree does not always win. The third thing I take away from this is, the person that stands firm in what he believes in and what he knows to be true can win. What do you think? Agreed? I think to be successful in life, you have to understand people and work together to get things done. Has to do with trust, and we've struggled with that in Springfield for the last three years. So today, where are we at? Well, we have a balance to, I'll be back, we have a budget, we tried to balance, didn't work out quite so well. Took three years to get a budget though. We have a tax increase, and still looking for some reforms. We bring in about $36 billion for our general revenue fund. We're the fifth-largest economy in the country, which just that alone makes us one of the largest economies in the world. We passed the Evidence-Based Education Bill, and I know we're all very hopeful for that, a lot of good things we believe will come from that. We also know that students are gonna go to other universities right now in other states. We've seen it. And parents, we know that if our children leave the state, what happens? They may not be back, right? I saw a study that looked at people leaving the state, and those that are coming into the state have an average salary of $20,000 less than those that are leaving. And with all of that, I hear a number of times that we're in need of a capital bill, an infrastructure bill, one that helps improve roads and bridges. All right? Illinois roads, they could get better, couldn't they? And our biggest issue, I think, is the financial stability of our state. We're $9 billion in unpaid bills. Some people have not been paid for over a year or more. We owe more money on new bonds to pay down the debt, and our public pensions are the worst-funded in the country. I think someone mentioned $140 billion, $130 billion, some point with all the zeros, I don't know, but it's a lot. Fair to say? It's a lot. Of course, and that's really only if everyone retired and did it. But either way, we spend over $7 billion for pension payments, and the payments go up every year, and those payments will take a bigger bite out of the rest of the budget until we get this figured out. It's like money working in schools, social services, and roads, and everything else. So what we're hearing about today, I think, for just a moment, in Springfield, I want to talk about in terms of pensions. There's a lot of talk about, "What do we do with pensions? How do we fix that?" I think in times in the past, we talked about cost shifting, which basically moves some of that to local K-12 school districts. That's an issue. Solution? We have a lot to think about, a lot, lot to work through on that, but that is something out there. There's also been talk about, "Well, what do we do about the pensions? Do we tax the pensions?" That's some discussion. How do we pay for this? It's a mess. It's an absolute mess. We've heard about some of those sites. There's some talk about changing the tax structure. But either way, as we work these different issues and challenges, we've got to find a way to get this resolved sooner than later. This has gone far too wrong, and every day this goes on, the amount that we owe goes up farther and farther. So to get out of this financial pressure, we have a limited number of options, and none of them are easy. Illinois cannot go bankrupt. We cannot tax ourselves out of this. We can't cut our way out of this, and the only real way, I think, is to try and grow the economy. We've got to do a better job of helping people dream. That's kind of what Bob was talking about, about dreams, helping figure out where they need to get to, and then help them get there. Personal accountability, helping businesses grow, creating jobs, all the things that we know that we need to do. I was at the high school in Watsiki, Illinois, just a few days ago, actually last Thursday. We talked about three state branches of government. There was a citizen classes that we talked to, talked about who was responsible for what, we talked about elected officials, what they did, and those sorts of things, and the kids really did pretty well. As class time was winding down, I asked them, "What do you want to talk about?" Several hands went up. They also were motivated by the two-tier rules that I had in my faculty there to pass on. First thing that came up was term limits. Why don't we have those? Great conversation. Second thing they brought up, "What about marijuana? Medicine marijuana is legal now, but what about the whole thing?" Great conversations. These are our future leaders, and we need to be engaged in what they're talking about. Great conversation, talking about balanced budget. What's a budget mean? Yeah, as long as you've got the credit card, I can help with this, but a lot of issues on those too. And then finally, one senior asked, "What really happens in Springfield that we don't read about in books?" I said, "Well, okay, I got two things you can try. If I may say, there's a guy named Speaker Madden. We have more power than the governor when it comes to lawmaking. Some of the bills that we vote on are not real, they're more about positioning. 4,000 bills, I think, went to the House this past year, and Speaker Madden has control over every one of them, and that impacts my ability to represent my district. The Speaker has the ability to create the bill and shape the discussion around it. We voted on bills sometimes we know that will never become law, and just to give you an example, I voted on a bill, I think, 17, 18 times around property taxes, and we knew it was never gonna go anywhere. But that took time, took positioning, and that's the politics side of this that's very real." So that was one thing we shared. And the second thing I said, much of what you see in the news today in Springfield is and has been focused on the next governor election. Whoever's elected governor will have an impact on drawing the legislative maps and the impact of gerrymandering of how these maps are drawn, and these maps are really are key to the power and how it works in Springfield. Those maps are key to the power in which both the House works and the Senate works. And if the Democrats maintain control of the General Assembly and a Democrat wins the governor's seat, more than likely Speaker Madden will again get to draw the maps the way he wants to, and understand it. The other option, if the Democrats maintain control of the General Assembly and a Republican wins the governor's seat, then there may be some kind of map compromise or a map on the other side. That's the way we have in our Constitution today. So at least twice in the last two major elections, I guess you could say, people were trying to put the gerrymandering question on the ballot, but both times, it was shut down. People really wouldn't have heard what was gonna be said. So either way, we're going from here. We're trying to talk about a lot of different issues very quickly, but again, it's true So either way, uh, we're going from here, we're trying to talk about a lot of different issues very quickly, but again, it's truly an exciting time to be in Springfield. Frustrating is at the same time, we're getting more to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Uh, we're going now to the Senate side of the legislature, and Scott Bennett. Scott served a little bit as a Assistant States Attorney, so he's got a good legal mind, which is always very helpful within the, you know, within the legislature. Supported the budget, supported the, you know, Senate Bill One, passed on Senate Bill in nineteen forty-seven, and that'll be something I'm sure he'll talk about in terms of some of the reasons why it was difficult and a compromise to support that. So let's welcome Scott.
Good morning. As was stated, my name is Scott Bennett, I'm the only Democrat legislator on the panel, I'm the only Senator, only one without tie comments, so I'll be brief, only one not wearing a tie, so that's how you know, it'll be fast. First of all, I wanted to echo some of the comments earlier, how much we appreciate being here today, and the chance to come and talk to you, probably, we have very tough jobs, there's no question, but people in this room, I think, have tougher ones. While we certainly get no shortage of people coming up to us and telling us they could do our job better, some of them may be right, actually, it's on election year, so I could tell you that. But you guys, since everyone, or most everyone, has gone through a school system, I went to high school, I think I could tell you, should we intend it or school board, exactly what you're doing wrong, until the point when you ask them, would you like to get on the school board and try to work on that? Well, I'm pretty busy. But I think you guys, because people have a little bit of knowledge, sometimes that can be a dangerous thing, and I know you certainly get the lion's share of criticism in your own community, so thank you for what you do. You get very, very little praise, and often a lot of criticism, but I can't imagine where we'd be without you guys stepping up to the plate and being leadership here. My uncle mentioned quite a few things, some of which we'll address tomorrow at Thanksgiving, we won't fight in front of others, I feel sorry for the rest of the people there, as we talk about gerrymander districts and things like that, I regret very soft. But, uh, he mentioned someone that's really important to me, and was certainly important to, to him, and that would be his mother, my grandmother, Sherilyn Bennett. As he mentioned, it really wasn't that long ago, that she was a product of a one-room schoolhouse. In fact, all four of my grandparents, growing up in rural southern Illinois, went to rural one-room schoolhouses. The school that Grandma went to was called Pleasant Valley Country School, which sounds like a country club now, but no, it was certainly not at that time. And while it sounds really nice, you've got to imagine, you had everyone, probably ten or twelve kids, from a two-mile area, which is as far as, at that time, the state of Illinois thought you could walk in these modern conditions. And you had first through eighth grade all in one room. So you had, you were hoping you had a smart kid a year ahead of you, because you really get a lot more time getting taught by your second grader or the third grader than you are from the teacher who's trying to teach eight grades at one time. You can't imagine the disparity they had. And then for my grandmother, she then, when she gets to high school, then she goes into town and has to compete against kids who went into a more traditional elementary school set. And then you go into the world, and you have to compete against kids in the city who had, you know, very different upbringing. So the disparity you had in one state, depending on if you have a smart kid a year ahead of you, or a good country school teacher, or you lived in the city, that was something else to the state said, we can't tolerate, we're one state, we can't have those kind of differences. So it was actually in the early fifties, late forties, that they changed that, and they brought all the country kids into town, and that was a monumental, state-changing innovation, that completely changed the face of education. So for about the last half of the century, you had kind of that stagnant system that most of us went through, and we're getting used to that. But then we realized, even in that system, huge disparities were growing, right? If you, in my, my district in particular, it's, it's helpful, even in a small section of east central Illinois, you see that disparity. You have Champaign-Urbana, which has a lot of very educated people being a college town, a lot of new money coming in when professors will move in, or industries will spring up in the research parks there. But I also have towns like Danville, which suffer through some of the de-industrialization that you've seen across the Midwest, and some real money issues they have there. And a whole lot of small rural communities in which they have a really hard time meeting the bare minimum of what they like to do. So even in that area, in a twenty or thirty mile area, you have just huge swings of wealth, and that was met also by state funding disparities, where you have some in wealthy school districts getting two, three, three and a half times the state funding you'd get in a rural school, only compounding that problem, it's bad enough, and then it gets worse. So I really applaud Representative Pritchard and, and my seatmate in the Senate, Andy Menard, in the work they've done for years to try to change this, to move this aircraft carrier in a different direction, which isn't easy to do. Because anytime you have some schools that are the top of that and some schools at the bottom, and you say, well, let's bring those bottom schools up, that sounds great. What's the other side of that? You have to possibly bring some of those schools down, or at least let other schools catch up to you, because nobody's excited to lose their advantage, right? And for those of you, either school members of those areas, your job is to protect those kids, not necessarily think about the whole state. So that's not an easy thing, and they've struggled with this, and found new formulas, and really wrestled with that. But I would argue that what they're trying to do is every bit transformational as what we saw in the nineteen fifties, when we brought those country kids to town. Trying to remember we are one state, and how you somehow can find one formula that'll work for rural kids, small-town kids, and the city of Chicago kids, that's not easy, and that's the job we face in our legislature. I would say that we have, I, I think, three major issues which we're going to see this year. As was stated, I was a big supporter of Senate Bill One, through most of its negotiation, like all things, sometimes negotiation isn't, isn't pretty, you've got to figure out how to get the votes. For me, the last compromise in which you brought enough votes over, including the governor's most important vote, so he could sign the bill, was one where you basically created a tax shelter may be too strong a term, but a way to allow people who put in money into private school foundations to get a massive tax break. And for me, that was a bridge too far. And so that's something, I think, it was a one-year brand, uh, one-year pilot, the idea is, well, let's just see how this works. To me, that's a slippery slope, and it's something that you as school board members, and you as voters in the state of Illinois are going to have to really deal with. Where, when we recognize there's not enough public dollars to go around, to what extent are we comfortable with some of any of those public dollars being diverted off to go to private school funds? And that's something we should have a real discussion about as we go forward, not just this year, but in all years of time. The property tax freeze, in which Representative Bennett talked about how many times he's voted on it, that's not dead, that's, that's certainly an issue that continues to swirl, and understandably so. We, all across the state, in some states, some parts of states more than others, we pay astronomically high property taxes, particularly compared to our neighbors in our neighboring states. And we have to talk about the reasons why, and what ways we can lower those. So now the struggle begins, in fact, much of the debate of this year's budget was, alright, maybe we can get on board the property tax freeze, but at what extent? Can we do it for two years and study what effects that has? Or, as the governor said, should we do a permanent property tax freeze? And there's a lot of issues that are going to come around with that, and again, I welcome your comments, because you are not only taxpayers, who probably, many of you who own property yourselves and pay property taxes, but you also see what property taxes pay for in your local school districts. I would point out, in Springfield, we were very quick to tell, to say, especially in election years, we're going to, we want to put out those flyers to say, we froze your property taxes, we lowered your property taxes. But Springfield neither raises or spends a dollar of your property taxes, those are all spent in your local communities. And so that discussion should come, who makes the decision about what the right property tax is? Is it in Springfield where you have, if you're lucky, one or two people in your community voting on it? Or they are in your local district where everyone lives there, knows what the schools and parks and cities are like, and they can make that decision as elected on a local level? That's a discussion we should continue to have. And then finally, teacher shortages. My, the, I, I represent Champaign-Urbana, and it's where I live now, but I represent a lot of rural communities, and I grew up in the town that Representative Bennett continues to live in, in Gibson City, where our family continues to farm for about a hundred and fifty years. It's still the largest industry in the state, but we've seen over and over, no one, very few people, less than a dozen some years in this whole state of Illinois, are going into ag education. So we, this year started a task force with the State Board of Education, thank you to the President Smith on this, to try to work on, why is that? Why, what can we do, what incentives can we do, what can we do to make sure that we protect the largest industry in the state? And we've had two meetings thus far in the task force, and what I've been interested to find is, yes, there's absolutely shortage in ag teachers, but that's but that is not limited to the agricultural fields. Teachers that are leaving the, the, the field of education and going elsewhere, it's staggering, and we have to figure out why that is, and that's, that needs to be a long conversation. When people say, well, why is that, there's not a silver bolt that answers all those questions. But it is something we have to begin the conversation before it's too late. The administration's the room, many I'm sure will be able to tell you a story, a decade ago, when there was an opening, they got a dozen, two, three dozen applicants, depending where you live. Now they get two or three, if they get that. Why is that? And what can we do to reverse that trend forward? So those are some of the issues I want to talk about, I want to give more time for some questions, because I'm sure you guys have some other things you need to be thinking about. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you, Senator Bennett. Uh, the next individual needs no real introduction, because we've known Tony now for quite a while. I will say that I do remember a P twenty meeting, but maybe two years ago, when you said, if we can't get school funding done, then we should just basically give up the goal, because we were all in favor of it, everybody was there, Senator Menard, Senator, I think Bob might have even been there. Everybody, Berickman, everybody was there, we wanted to get it done. Well, you know what it took to get that done? It took a lot of cooperation with State Board of Education, literally hundreds and hundreds of hours before even the first evidence-based bill hit the, hit the pavement. And thanks to Tony and his team for being willing to work on those things. And it took some criticism over that, because working behind the scenes on something is not an easy thing for an agency to do, because you tend to be showing a bit of a commitment to that, and then have to kind of close the door on that for every single other issue that comes to, to the table. And I know there were, there were times, there were ten or eleven different requests for new modeling done on the evidence-based model, and of course, everybody wants to have this model, and I want the results tomorrow. And so his group, they were good job managing all of that. The running state board is a, is a big issue, and remember, those of you who are here, he has his own Board of, you know, Directors, Board of Education, and he asks, who I answer to as well. Uh, well, let's welcome him, and he can talk about the future here in, in Illinois.
Thank you, Mike. And I see at least one of my board members, Bruce Cross? Yeah, anybody else? So Bruce Cross. And I do start with deep appreciation, kind of echoing what's been shared by members of the General Assembly. The deep commitment locally to lead and volunteer and create the conditions for children to thrive and for families to be connected, and educators are creating community. I think most of you know at this point, what I deeply believe, healthy public schools are the heart of healthy community. If we don't create healthy public schools, we all suffer. The ability to create the conditions for our children to be contributing citizens, the primary workforce development agency in any community is the K-12 system. And our ability to think different about what our children need, and they are situated in very different places. So I'll talk a little bit about, I mean, some extraordinary success, right? We have changed capital P policy in Illinois in some very fundamental ways, some potentially transformative ways. So evidence-based funding, this idea, and one of the reasons why I said what I said at that meeting was, people were saying, hey, this isn't fair. There kind of, there came to be a moment where across the aisle, across the entire General, yeah, this really isn't fair, there are some issues here, we've got to do something different. So that was a real step forward, obviously, working out all that, how you address that is, is a big deal. But now, those kids that are furthest away from adequacy in communities that have the least resources are now prioritized with new funding. That's a very big deal, right? So, you know, if you've spent time in classrooms or in schools doing professional development, there's kind of the warm, cool, and hard feedback, that's how you do feedback, and so, so that's really good, the warm feedback. Uh, there are a couple of major problems. The, the core is still on local property tax. So, so the fundamental problem was not addressed in the bill, right? So, I mean, if you're in your local community, you get this, because we still have the situation where now we're talking about, you know, percent reliance on state funding and percent of adequacy. So now we've started to do those numbers, and, you know, some folks have talked about this. We have districts right now today at forty-six percent of adequacy, and districts well over two-hundred percent of adequacy in Illinois right now today. Okay, so that fundamental structural inequity is not fixed by evidence-based funding. Obviously, as an advocate for districts and for families and for kids in those districts, uh, you know, State Board is going to be saying, hey, full funding, because anything less is disabling the future of Illinois. Sixty percent, like, there's an expectation in the state that by twenty twenty-five, sixty percent of our kids will have a high-quality post-secondary credential or degree. Because over seventy percent of the jobs will require that. Uh, if we want people employed, they need to keep learning, right? So how well are we preparing our kids to keep doing that? Uh, there are deep, deep issues, right? We have almost over two million kids in Illinois, over half of those children are living in poverty, and over half of those children are students of color. So we have more students of color than we have white students, and we have more students living in poverty than we have students who are not. So if we keep talking about it just universal in general, we will not interrupt the deep inequity in the state. So evidence-based funding does something pretty radical, it changes the conversation, but we haven't done enough yet by far. The other thing, right, House Bill six-five-six. So the folks in this room who hammered on that, advocated for it, you're champions. Illinois was the only state in the country that, for title funding, the pension that everybody talks about, so if you're a superintendent or board, you know this story. Almost forty cents on the dollar was going to pensions for title funding. Now, title funds, for everybody in this room, you know this already, goes to your highest need kids. Well, if you're taking forty cents of the dollar, you start buying stuff instead of people. And we know the biggest difference maker for kids with high needs is people, not stuff. So House Bill six-five-six is extraordinary. It now brings it down to normal costs from the title funding, that's seventy-two million dollars more for our kids. That's a massive win. So there are some things that are extraordinary, I mean, capital P policy changes that are great for our kids. Uh, every student succeeds at creating the conditions in this state to actually have growth as a primary infrastructure now for our accountability system. Moving from just attainment, which was did you or didn't you, and if you didn't, with zero recognition of your local conditions and where your kids were situated, so now we've moved to growth. Uh, I appreciate everybody's effort to do that, like, we got that in, excuse me, last April, because we wanted to have lead time. Like, there are states right now that have submitted, that have no idea what their accountability system is going to be next August. So the whole thing is official next August. We got ours done, we got it in, it took the full hundred and twenty days. On the hundred and twentieth day, I got a call from the Secretary, uh, yeah, you guys are approved. So now, we've been setting it out to figure out how will this actually work? You know, three indicators are still, we'll have those determined by December, the growth, the infrastructure, the actual modeling, the regression analysis, all that, by March. So we'll actually have a durable framework that we can have a conversation about and, and how to really work together. You know, I think most of you know this, if you had a chance to hear me talk before, or if it had been in your district or your schools, deep respect and appreciation for what is happening in schools, to create conditions for kids, they come from all over the place. I believe deeply that talent is abundant in this state and distributed across the state, across groups of kids. Opportunity is not, though. And how we have funded and the structural issues, like, families don't get to pick all, you know, the supports that they have or don't, until they get to the school. And then the school is sit, you know, it's situated somewhere, and in a state that has not been providing funding, from two thousand nine to seventeen, public schools were underfunded by four billion. That money's not getting made up. Evidence-based money isn't now suddenly saying, hey, we're going to make up for how we didn't pay for that. The deep inequity in the state, you guys are on the front lines of that every day, making a difference for kids and families. And we're trying to figure out a state agency, you know, we've got under four hundred folks, eight hundred and fifty-two districts. How and what ways can we be facilitators of your success? Trying to figure out how to respond and be much more engaged, service-oriented, we've got a heck of a lot of work to do, and obviously, it's not where it needs to be. But I, you know, I'm pretty passionate about how and in what ways we can move the conversation in this state to what districts do well, because part of the, part of teachers leaving, this is an assault on the profession. Everybody says, oh, the public school system, you do too much, you don't do enough, you guys made a terrible decision. don't do enough. You guys made a terrible decision. They don't make any decisions. It's never, what have they done well? How have they created the conditions for more kids to be okay? And what else do we have to do? Like, if you go into a classroom, remember back, did your teacher always tell you every day how terrible you were, what you didn't know? There was no hope for your future? No. As educators, we get to lead this conversation now. I think it's our time to lead. I think we've got to be more aggressive, more clear, and have a much finer point on the issues of inequity and what we're doing every day and champion that. Last thing I'll say, we had our third budget hearing yesterday. The stories that educators are bringing, and that's kind of how I learned my lesson my first year going to the General Assembly, basically, I got hammered. Why does this need all this money? I basically learned, hey, we need stories from the field. My second year, I went and said, well, Representative, this is from your community. I just heard from FFA. I just heard about this. That's why we're advocating for the ag line. Yeah. Another senator says, hey, how much money can the state board cut? How much money can we cut from education? And I keep saying, you know, Senator Chairman Reverend Meeks said, go ask for all the money our kids need. I'm not here to offer you cuts. So, we're going to continue to champion, lead for, and demand the kind of support our kids need, that you need, Senator. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator. Okay, we're going to take a few questions here. And so, if you're thinking that you'd like to ask a question of one of our panelists, you can come up to the microphone in the aisle. There are a couple of rules on that. One, we want to keep it civil.
Oh.
Two...
The whole room leaves.
Yeah. Two, we don't want to ask the same questions over and over, or, and also, we don't want to have just opportunities for people to, you know, to pontificate, if you will. So, let's keep them kind of short, and let's ask the question once, get some answers, and let's move on. So, if you could just identify yourself, your community, who you'd like to answer the question, and then ask the question, we'll get on.
Joe Sunnabell, Mount Prospect District 57. Two issues relating to property taxes, and whoever wants to address them, that would be... One is, what's being talked about in Springfield to rein in the out-of-control TIF process? In Cook County, we have over 400 TIF districts, and every property owner in Cook County is subsidizing every one of those TIFs. And there's been estimates that it's increased property tax bills maybe as much as 10%. So, and of course, you know, the taxpayers come to our board meetings yelling and screaming about their property taxes. So, that's one. Number two, is there any discussion at all going on about how we could possibly treat commercial real estate tax differently from residential real estate tax? In my community, we have two neighboring districts, both in Mount Prospect. One has a huge shopping center, a huge business center, and those lie just outside of the borders of my district. So, while my district is spending $10,000 per student, my neighboring district in Mount Prospect spends $15,000 per student. That's an inequity, not between downstate and suburbs, not between Chicago and the suburbs. That's an inequity right in my community. And we have to do something to more widely distribute commercial property taxes. And I would suggest that a formula that compel neighboring districts to set, to share that revenue might also serve as an incentive for districts to consolidate. So, I would like to hear your comments on that. And if there is a conversation with what's, what's being talked about in Springfield at this point.
Bob, what are you on the tip?
Yeah, I'll answer the first part of that. That did come up, the disparity of what school districts can have access to. In a TIF district, came up, and we decided, with all the issues we were getting with, we couldn't really deal with that one adequately. So, we have formed a TIF task force to look between now and April at the whole issue of impact, consequences, impact on school districts, and what some alternatives would be. So, keep monitoring that, give input to that task force, and hopefully, we'll come up with some issue, because I know it's a big issue, especially where we have in some parts of the state residential TIF districts, which really is an impact on the school district, that you have to supply the services without any revenue. So, it's a big issue. And when we look at the property tax, sales tax issue, that one also has been talked about for a long time, and other states have better models, where the state collects the sales tax and redistributes it. So, there's no attraction for trying to get a business to come into your community versus your neighboring community for the sake of those sales taxes. But changing that in the short term is going to be a real difficult issue, because there's a lot of people that support the system we have right now.
Anybody else want to comment on...
I appreciate the question, Joe. This is my third year in the Senate, and I guess you could say, my biggest criticism of the whole institution, of the General Assembly and the state government, is that it doesn't seem to have a plan. And I hate, I hate to speak in accessory posters, but, you know, there is the adage of failing to plan is plan to fail. When we're talking about, you know, this year, or two, well, the last three years, we've run two years without any funding for universities, and we heard about, about to close. And people said, well, maybe we have too many universities, or maybe we have too many community colleges. But there was no real effort to say, well, you want to sit down and talk about which ones you want to cut? You want, you want to do this rationally? Is, I assume that you will expect this to do, and sit down and talk about these things? Or should we just kind of Darwinism and see who survives? The same thing, you know, to Joe, to your questions, when we talk property taxes, some of the suggestions is, okay, if we do a property tax freeze, could we do it for a set amount of time and use that time, two, three years, whatever we fight consensus on, and actually use that time to study so it's data-driven and not election campaign-driven, right? Well, this way, we can do it over two years, and then I can put it on a flyer in perpetuity, that I save the property taxes. I'm going to guess at some point, my constituents are pretty smart. They're going to realize their property taxes aren't really going up. They're stopping every two years, and then making a huge jump every two years, ready to catch up. I mean, people aren't stupid. This is a trick that might work once, but I don't, I don't see the rationale in continuing it. But to all your points, these are all very valid things. You know, we set property taxes too high, and they'll shrug and go, why are they so high? Well, we pay things that Indiana does not pay with their property taxes. We need to talk about that, and we're failing to do so right now.
I will say that on the TIF issue, that Bogan Oyazgo and I, yes, have created their own team to investigate some of the TIF issues that exist throughout the state, and be ready then to represent those issues when the task force begins its work. So, your associations are working on your behalf, trying to represent those issues in a sort of reasonable and effective way, and really kind of identifying those things that actually could be addressed in terms of policy change and legislative and statutory change.
Hi, I'm Carissa Catherine, and I'm the president of Hillberg District 24 School Board. And I wanted to address the limiting property tax freeze. During the years of proration, districts were prorated equally, but that was regardless of our funding levels and our adequacy. So, because of that, we had, our community that is very school-based and very devoted to our schools passed a property tax referendum, where Lake County ran a P-Town. So, that was to make up for the lack of state funding. So, for us, the formula was a big deal, especially the per-district hold harmless. Now, we're looking at this possible property tax freeze, and unfortunately, that will take away a lot of the additional funding, our referendum, which was a heavy lift, and we were lucky that our community chipped in for it. It's going to take away a lot of that. And I guess my question is, we are funded to 29% from the state. The national average is 44%. The state hasn't done its job for us. Our local community got together and said, we want to pass our referendum because we care about our schools. My question is, if you're still underfunding us, even with the school funding formula, how is it the state's business to take control over local decisions? I can promise you, we have a high property tax rate. I want to see our community thrive, and as a local elected official, the second we're funded to even basic adequacy, I want to freeze those property taxes. But it should be our decision, not the state's. So...
That's a good comment. Anybody want to respond? I mean, I think that... Here's the thing, nobody on this stage has voted for a property tax freeze. So, that's a good, good thing. That doesn't mean it's not going to come up again, or not going to be other issues on the table and so forth. But it obviously is a big issue. And I think probably everybody on this stage would shake their head, yes, we believe in local control. And we believe that school boards are doing a really good job to manage their relationship with the community. I would still think they would support wholeheartedly. So, with that, let's give one round of applause to our panel. Thank you all for coming.